I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first is our program review. Mr. Erlinson.
Does that always happen when you walk up to a podium?
Did you say you sent the... It didn't come out. Here we go. Alright, I'll scroll down and you let me know where you want me to go.
Hi, can you just switch your line down?
Okay.
We're gonna wing it a little bit. This is, uh, Nick was gonna be here tonight to do this presentation. But he is sick today, so I got his presentation this afternoon and I'm gonna, I'll take it from there. But for the overview here, um, our main offerings, uh, whole core offerings, athletics, activities, fine arts and clubs. Last year, over 70 students participated on 20 new teams. Um, the teams are listed there as well. This is kind of a review. We covered some of this a year ago. Um, there hasn't been any, um, any changes really in the number of offerings. One thing that is on the, uh, on the horizon is, um, our high school league has moved forward with boys volleyball. So they're, it's, it's an emerging sports status this year. Um, and that could be, uh, that should become an official state high school league sport for the following year. Couple of things with that that they're still trying to figure out is, um, what season it'll be played. So there's both questions as far as like, can we find coaches if we run it in the fall? Some of the thought is that maybe your coaches at Coach Child, when his team would be coaching boys if they ran it in the spring. And then they look at how you balance out activities as far as the number of, uh, male offerings in the fall versus the spring. But those are the two seasons that, uh, they are potentially looking at. Currently that, uh, the emergency sport is run in the spring. Um, there's a number of schools in the metro area that has club teams that compete in that. So that is something that is progress. Many schools I would think that would look at that as in a cooperation to kind of see where that goes. So that's where we're at right now. Our conference membership, um, we've covered this before, but we've been a member of the Wright County Conference, um, for about, for about eight decades. Um, and we've seen a number of changes in that conference. A couple of years ago, we had, uh, we had 60 member schools in the Wright County Conference. Eight schools being on the west side and eight schools being on the east side. That wasn't necessarily a geographical alignment as much as it was a size alignment with the number of schools. So we had a bigger change when we had, uh, three of our member schools with, uh, Waconia, Orno and Dupre left the conference a couple of years ago. And then we, uh, we gained one back. I mean, all three of those schools were on the east side of the conference. So when they left, South West Christian joined the east side of the conference. And we've been in kind of an imbalanced situation in the Wright County Conference since. The west side of our conference has eight schools, the east side has six. We've gone from a situation where Delano population wise, used to be kind of in the middle of the pack, um, size wise, and now we're the second largest school in the conference. And we are rapidly gaining on Hudson Center, who is currently the largest in the country. And we've seen some things that have happened over the last year or two where there's been some conferences that have evolved and have looked, some of those schools have looked at coming to the Wright County Conference. And the schools that are looking to come into our conference are significantly smaller, which also kind of shifts the dynamic within our conference as well. We had three schools apply and, uh, two of them made formal applications in Bell Plain and Norwood Young America. And the conference voted to, um, not approve either of them for membership. Both of those schools, um, you know, in Norwood Young America, they come in and they will be the smallest school in the conference. Smaller than Howard Lake, who is currently there. And, uh, Bell Plain would have been, um, would have been, you know, somewhere in that Jordan range. So they would have been a smaller school. Um, and the difficulty we see from, from our, uh, from our perspective is the number of opportunities we have for students. We're looking to add member schools that have those same types of offerings. So if you talk about sports like hockey or lacrosse, um, we're looking for member schools to join our conference that can bring teams that will compete in those sports as well. Soccer is another example where it's a little bit lighter. Wrestling, we could add some more schools. So this continues to be, uh, one of the big things that we're facing, um, as far as where we're evolving in a conference. You know, I use this term a lot, terminology a lot when we talk about Delano being a transition community. As we grow and change, um, some of it is, you know, I've asked the question, this guy, okay, when you're bringing recommendations or talking about, in which direction are you facing? The idea is that are we looking west or are we looking east? And as we transition, our, our, you know, our view will have to continue to pivot. And the challenge about where we're gonna end up in a conference and where those schools are gonna be, that's gonna be something that's gonna continue to, gonna to, continue to be on our plate. Nick has some things here as part of the director moving forward. And what he really wants to work on is a consistent way to evaluate, get feedback to coaches. Looking for construction, constructive methods for players and parents to provide feedback. And then a cohesive structure that help guide programs moving forward. And that, when we talk about trying to handle things more consistently, um, that's what that is talking about. You know, I, I use the terminology silos often, um, but some of that can still be said too is, is that if we have groups that are operating like this, and the more, uh, the more they move forward, they tend to space out a little bit more. So what we want to do is make sure we have a structure involved that we're dealing with things consistently. And that's, and that's part of that as well as far as the direction moving forward. Some of the challenges are ahead. Uh, so we, this is year two of seventh and eighth grade activities shifting over to community ed. And, um, we haven't really changed that into a traditional community ed model. For the most part, what we've done is we've, we've shifted it over. We're still paying coaches off of the expectancy of the master agreement. You know, we're still doing transportation. Um, and those things are the lion's share of the expense in programs. So part of this is as we look forward and how things are gonna evolve, those are some things we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to tackle. And part of that, that, that term is intentional is when we look at football. We have a big deficit coming when it comes to, uh, equipment replacement for football. We have a couple of things working against us is that helmets have gone up significantly over the last three years. And, um, protocols on how we, how we maintain those helmets have also come into place since, uh, the discussions about CT and concussion. So our helmets are significantly more expensive than even at the younger levels. And then those helmets have to be reconditioned every two years and your life cycle on a helmet is about 10 years. So we have a, we inherited a big chunk of helmets at that seventh and eighth grade level that are all gonna age out. So we can't put those on kids anymore. Um, so we're gonna have a huge equipment expenditure coming up. And looking at how we're operating that traditional model with some very large expenditures coming up, those things don't, those things don't match up. So we have a, a challenge ahead on, on what that looks like. In football, it's just a great example because of, of that expense. Some of the other models that are out there, um, Prior Lake runs a seventh and eighth grade football league. So that's typically a Tuesday night, Saturday morning game play. Communities like Prior Lake, Eden Prairie, Waconia, Orno and Dupre, those are the types of schools that are operating within that league. So those are the types of things that are on the horizon on, on how do we look at how we're gonna operate sports. And, you know, the idea is we, we made the shift over to media and we're still operating pretty traditionally, but it's not sustainable. And it's not sustainable for a couple of different reasons. Both on, when you talk about coach salaries and equipment and transportation, both of all things that the only way we can keep up with that is by raising revenue. And at some point, you know, people aren't gonna pay $650 for six games in seventh grade football. You know, it's just, it's just, it'll exceed the market and we won't be there for it.
So obviously that's a widespread problem with football helmets. Like, is, do we just have to either delegate budget or, or do fundraising? And what are other school districts talking about, you know?
Well, there's school districts that are in our position, um, you know, they've gotten away from this. So when you look at seventh and eighth grade football in your Ornos and Waconias, that's an expenditure that parents stay out. They're buying the helmet, shoulder pads, pants.
And what about varsity level on the helmets?
Same challenges. You know, I would say that what, what was here, um, you know, I think Sean inherited some aging equipment. So there's shoulder pads and things that some of our kids are wearing that should, should be out of our inventory.
Understood. Just wondering how they're tackling the problem budget wise.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think with, like we talked about with boosters, they're doing the best they can to raise as much money as possible. We've tried, uh, the last couple of years, we have some dollars within our budget that we have some discretion on. We try to shift a little bit more of this to football, try to get them kind of built back up a little bit. But it's, it's, it's a big issue. Uh, so even, you know, throwing a few thousand dollars to help with equipment, the spend for, for a program like football is significantly more every year. So that continue as we're continuously raising revenue over to sustain the program like that.
We also are having conversations. We have capital dollars for equipment and things like that that we'll be looking at some projected possibilities to tap that fund as well.
Thanks, Eric.
Um, and then some of the things with the conference I kind of milked into a little bit that are already, um, you know, we, we've tried to go off and look for other partners to come to the conference. And like I said, the, the schools that are interested in joining us do not match up competitively with us, both in, you know, size of district and program offerings. The schools that look like us and that are the best fit are the ones that lack our conference competition. So there's a big challenge there. Um, you know, the, a lot of that discussion has kind of added the tail of two conferences. The idea that we're in the Wright County Conference. A lot of times it operates like two separate conferences. The needs of the number of schools on the west side are very different than the needs of the schools on the red side. There's, there's that balance there as far as, um, we do some things together, but a lot of times it's, you're operating like two separate conferences, so. Some of the challenges are ahead. Um, you know, we have, we will have situations where we'll have younger athletes that can, can slide up at a different level. And sometimes that increases the number of kids that add a sport. I mean, I think volleyball is a great example. A lot of kids want to play. But sometimes when that, when those younger athletes slide up, maybe that bounces a sophomore down to a C level team. Well, the high school league is really clear on this is that, that C level team, which is intended for ninth grade and under, that needs to only have ninth grade and under on those teams. So when we slide sophomores down, um, that team now has to follow kind of everything underneath the high school league rule, which changes how often a kid can play, how many, uh, games or periods or quarters they can compete in. So those are one things that we'll have to, uh, be a bit clearer on moving forward as far as when we, when we're operating C level teams, where we have some of our older athletes, um, you know, competitively wise they're at that level. We just have to be careful to make sure that we're not, um, jeopardizing anyone else's eligibility by operating that.
Eric, is that communicated to the sophomore parents when they get slid down that there's only so much playing time they can have? And, and things like that so that the parents can say, maybe I want my kid to ride the bench at a sophomore level versus coming down?
I think our coaches do a pretty good job of explaining placements. I would say that this in particular, um, when we had our fall meetings, the high school league is kind of a lot of times talking about this. So it's a greater emphasis from their side because they're seeing where this has, has impacted other areas. So this will be kind of a new discussion as far as how we operate those C level teams. And then who can be on those C level teams. So I think it is kind of twofold with that as well, so. And then I wanted to spend some time as far as, uh, some future stuff is this past summer, we reached an agreement with Go Fan. So they are electronic ticketing and they are, they're becoming kind of the go-to organization that operates us. They, uh, they were purchased and they're part connected with the same group that owns our schools. Our school is, we use the schedule app. Bonus with having Go Fan is that you can sell tickets electronically and it's linked right with your schedule system. So we want to do that and not have a lot of extra data or a lot of extra input. They're kind of the organization that goes. So we jumped on within the summer and by agreeing to use them for our electronic ticketing, they, they front loan us with, I think we got three iPads, we got like six card readers, which allows us to move forward with electronic ticketing. And what that means is that you can pre-buy your ticket, um, you can pay electronic payment at the door. And as we transition to moving forward to kind of where most schools are headed already, this is kind of the platform that we're gonna be looking at. We, uh, we did a pilot test with this fall with No School Play. And what we did is we sold tickets online ahead of time and then we, we did cash at the door. So we, we offered the two different options. We wanted to see where the interest level was. And we did that as a test this fall and then for homecoming, we are gonna have the ticket option as well. We'll, we'll have both for, for homecoming, but we're gonna test it out there as well. And then for all section games, all playoff games for all sports, that will be all electronic. And that's, that's also, you forgot to remember section games are not our events. It's a state high school. So they moved to electronic a number of years ago. So we are gonna follow suit. All those games will be handled that way. The nice thing about the, um, with Go Fan is that the user interface is really smooth. You, you can order online. You do not have to put a ton of information, name, address. It comes to your phone. Um, when you get there, there's no scanning. You, you can show the ticket takers, I'm redeeming this ticket and you're in. So it's really smooth. Feedback we received during the No School Play is both for our ticket takers as well as, uh, people who came to watch that show as how easy and smooth it was. So we're gonna continue to move that direction, implement it piece by piece with the ideas that we can fully implement this type of system for, uh, just what you're talking about.
These are grandparents over 80 years old. That's kind of a smooth.
I, I attended it and I bought them online.
My only concern...
That's a big statement right there.
That is a statement. Is some of our kids who are like last minute deciding to go, kids don't always carry cards, right? Like, so giving them access to a section game or something like that, having that cash option available to a kid who decides 20 minutes before, I'm gonna go with my friends, how are we going to handle that option?
Yeah, I think, um, well, for this year, I mean, we're gonna be testing it. I mean, if you went to like play a volleyball in Waconia last year against Benelli, if you showed up with cash, you weren't getting it. But what we're seeing is that more people are coming and asking for electronic payment options. And that is a flip on where things were a few years ago.
Yeah, I love the electronic option. I'm just thinking about like, A, the really, really olds who just haven't hit that world yet, or the younger kids who don't have access to that.
I think the other piece with electronic ticketing is we also wanna look at, um, how we handle our passes. Currently what we operate, we have a punch pass that we use. That was kind of limited that code when they weren't sure what, what activities were gonna take place. So part of it is we wanna take a look at, you know, what, what's, what's a student pass look like? What's an individual Dell pass look like? And this will be a, a full view of what we do for ticketing moving forward. And by us testing it this year, we get feedback. We'll find out how many people are paying at the door. So we'll, we'll measure that feedback before we have any follow-up information, so.
Sophia?
If anything, should teach the kids to plan ahead. We got smart kids.
Willie, can you take that on too, along with the testing, socialization?
Teaching them all to plan ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I bought a, I bought a punch pass.
You got 2,200 kids to teach to plan ahead. Just get on it.
Yeah, I'll do it. It should be done by tomorrow morning, actually, so.
The other aspect that comes with it and I'll open up the questions is, uh, through the system was valid. It allows us to, uh, a lot of people pay electronically for anything at the concession stand. It also allows us to track inventory. So if we wanna know how many Diet Coke we're selling, so we know what we want to purchase in the future, we'll have that to happen now. So Andy, there's a lot of cool things that come with this. And regardless of, you know, getting past some of the issues as far as kids paying cash or some older residents paying cash, we can work through that. I kind of liken this, you know how Minnesota does things? They typically Minnesota's somewhere in the middle, right, in the country? And I would say that we're moving forward that Delano's kind of operating like Minnesota on this, but I think we're probably a little bit slower. Most of the schools that we are competing against have transitioned. So if you go and you wanna find a ticket for a Dell event, you can, you can pop on their site and you can look at all of our home games and you can buy that electronic, electronic ticket now. So this is definitely where it's going. And what I wanna do is make sure that we're, um, we're using this here to figure out how it works, see what's gonna work best for Delano and implement that plan and get that.
That's good. Any questions for Eric? Go ahead.
I think just the signage is basically how, just showing that you can do that option now even at school on like a Friday before a football game, which would probably implement most students to do it, kind of, which I think would be the smartest thing, yeah.
Yeah, so for the upcoming game, uh, Juke's Stroll has already had signage printed, laminated, so we'll have that posted. The process to buy is really slick, uh, but we'll make sure that there's more information out there so people know that, you know. The process to buy the little information sheet is just four images and the, the instructions are so basic. It's pretty slick, but we'll make sure that that gets up there as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, up next is the consent agenda. It's all the financials of the district plus last month's meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by... Jim?
I'll second.
Second by Corey, thank you. Any further comment? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Alright, moving on, if I ever find it, is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Computer's taking its time. Alright. Where is Target? $2,022 for Delano Elementary. Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club, $2,777.70 for ninth grade booster paid football coach. Hatfield Family Properties, $1,000 for Delano Intermediate School Supplies. Running Tangents LLC, $500 for Athletics. Pro Lons Inc., $250. And Productivity Inc., $500 for Orange Crush Robotics Team 326 FRC. And Prudential Financials, surplus equipment for Drama. These gifts have generously been offered to be donated to Delano Public Schools with the conditions listed above. Do we have a motion for the acceptance of gifts?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? Alright, move to roll call vote.
Alright, Board Member Roder.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson.
Aye.
Board Member White.
Aye.
Board Member Zepa.
Aye.
Board Member Gerke.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
And Board Member, Board Member Shouse.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to personnel matters. Personnel matters are on the screen. There are a lot of them. Did a lot of hiring at the beginning of the year. Got a lot of students. Do we have a motion to, or a motion for the personnel matters?
So moved.
Motion by Sue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion?
Please note I did get my mother-in-law to become a cafeteria lady.
What he meant to say was he convinced his mother-in-law to apply for the job and then she was subsequently hired through a process. Just thought I'd clarify that. Alright.
And he will be abstaining.
And he will not be voting on this just because of that.
This is true. I abstain.
So all of those in favor of personnel matters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes 6-0 with one abstaining. That was fun.
I kicked her head off the floor.
Alright. Next up, administrative report. Superintendent Jane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am here to just give you a brief update, uh, from the superintendent's office for the September school board meeting. Obviously, all of our work that we do lies within our district vision, which is systemic growth towards academic excellence for every learner. I wanted to let you know, and this is going to be my opportunity to share with the board and I would entertain questions. If you remember, October is a very, very busy board meeting. So I took the initiative to share with you what our work plans are in for our last 10-year strategic plan. So if you recall, we have a work plan for each of the four district aims of the strategic plan in our last year, which is this school year. And those are in the areas of professional development, technology, curriculum, and...
Facilities.
Facilities. Thank you. So, uh, basically what I just wanna share with you, the professional development plan has kind of morphed over the last two years into what Megan and Maria were talking about is our literacy work. And this is, I think we are about two years ahead of the state with regard to what's required at the new state legislature with the REED Act. And that's because we've been focusing this work on multiple, uh, tiers of systems of support and our literacy, uh, science-based literacy work that we're doing, whether it's disciplinary literacy or other venues there. We do have one annual goal, and that's to implement effective tier-one practices in reading, language arts, math, and our social emotional language across all grade levels to move to 80% or more of students to proficiency by the end of the 2324 school year. So basically what that means is if we implement tier-one of our MTSS model, which is classroom research-based intervention at that classroom level, we should, by data and by best practice, reach 80% of our students with that type of an intervention if needed. Some don't need any, some will need a little bit more. But 80% of our students should get it once they go through that tier-one intervention. So that's a very, very big one goal that's driven by that PD work plan. Our curriculum work plan has two, uh, annual goals. One is to implement a curriculum review cycle to continuously improve curriculum, instruction, and student achievement. That's really going to be the benchmark of every school district is what we teach and making sure that we teach is relevant. It's tied to the state standards and that it is rigorous. And so we'll continue that curriculum review cycle that, uh, our coordinator is gonna be overseeing. In addition to that though, I believe that we have room to make sure that we enhance our curriculum transparency through the design, development, and maintenance of a curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and that there would be a web portal by the end of the 2324 school year. So when we have parents asking or future parents or prospective parents or parents that we currently have in the district, hey, what are you doing? What are those standards that you're doing in fourth grade? Here's where you go. And that'll be in, in, uh, language that's parent-friendly, um, that's not filled with education ease. And we wanna make sure that those standards are clearly articulated through our curriculum and that we're transparent about what we teach, when we teach it throughout the whole district. In the areas of facilities, most of that is not in goals. It's basically just by a completion list. So we're gonna complete the following projects. The solar arrays at the high school and the intermediate school should be done by November of 2023. This has been a long journey, but I believe we're seeing the end of it. I believe they've done everything mechanically to install the arrays on the high school. They're moving next week to the intermediate school. We're gonna have to pull some data from the arrays and then obviously our power source and things like that. So hopefully, over the MEA break, when we do that to get them online and actually up and running and operational, you actually have to cut power to the district. So you obviously can't do it when school's in session. So we're, we're, we're projecting by the MEA break. If all goes well and everything is moving still in the same, uh, pace as we are currently under, we should be able to get those online by, uh, for sure by November. Our weather station is up and operational, not yet. Our weather station is up and operational, not yet. It's up, it's built, it's just not online yet. I'm just waiting for West Hennepin to communicate with me that we're up online, and I know that there's going to be one teacher in the intermediate that's going to be first on the list to come and have their students tour the station that's there, so. But it would be really cool to track things online. In addition, those solar projects are required to have curriculum tied to them, and we do have a teacher in the intermediate and the high school that will be facilitating that curriculum and looking at real-time weather coming through and analyzing it. We did make an application for the solar array project. Right now, we're currently deciding on where the arrays might be located on the elementary building. There's some concern here because there's some roofs that are past warranty, some roofs that are original on the building since it was built in 1992. So we want to be very careful that we choose our location appropriately. I don't want to put arrays on a roof that we're going to replace in a year or two. So we might have to be a little bit delayed there or be a little bit more strategic. They like to put the arrays the closest they possibly can towards where the power source is, and so, of the building. So we want to make sure that we're still working through that as of right now. Mind you, we have not gotten any approval from the Department of Commerce. We're still in the application review process. I've already shared with you, obviously, we're going to have the board approve the community ed roof bid letter. And we're pleasantly under budget, so that'll be a good thing to get started right away and finish up by the end of this calendar year. We are going to next month go out for bids through a sealed bid process for repaving Tiger Drive from Elm to the stop sign on campus. A lot of people in our public don't know that that is not a school street. That is a private drive that's owned by the district. So it's up to us to maintain that Tiger Drive. And so I beg all of our constituents that come onto our campus to be a little patient. There's going to be, we were going to do this in the last summer. The State Department of Commerce had us go through a much more extensive process where we ran out of time. But we are still going to bid it out, we're specking it out, we're going to bid it out. I think we're having, we're scheduled on the 5th of October to do the bid opening, and so I will be bringing the award-winning bid to the board in October. Four work to be done in the summer of 2024. We won't do anything during the school year, obviously, but that'll give us time to prepare, to communicate, because that drive will be shut down for a period of time. And then we're going to continue to partner with the city and the hockey associations regarding the ice park. It's been a little bit of time since I've talked a little bit about the ice park. They went out for bid, they were way over bid numbers and what they were budgeted for. And so I believe the city is going out for a rebid process here coming up. I think it's around the 13th of October is when they're opening bids for that project again. So it's just wait and see. Really, the district doesn't have much of a, it has a much more of a secondary role at this point in time. It's up to the city and the two associations to kind of work through their budget and how bids get awarded, things like that, so we'll just wait and see. We've made the commitment to give the land to the city, but nothing has gone into play yet until the project comes to a little bit more fruition and a bid is approved and a contractor is approved for the project. But we'll continue to partner with both the city and the associations to move forward with a pretty exciting project in the end. But it's been a, it's been a difficult challenge. It's not a, it's not a simple project. And then the areas of technology, we have three major goals. We're going to develop a district website, you've heard that from Bobby Dahlke, our communications coordinator. We can just do a quick update a little bit later on in my presentation. We're also going to create and acquire a digital citizenship curriculum, pre-K through 12. I think it's important to be taking a look at, we have digital natives in our schools, and they're using devices, and we want to make sure that we have some offerings and that we're going to be doing a lot of research in this area because it seems to be fast-moving. But just how to navigate the internet, how to navigate social media, how to navigate those things. Obviously, that's a partnership with our parents, but it's also something if we have a curriculum and how do we use our curriculum, how is that digitally working? So that's something that we're going to be looking into as well. And we're going to evaluate and maintain the inventory of our hardware and our software to prioritize evidence-based technology use, so. The 2025 strategic planning timeline, I told you about the last work plan, so the last 10-year plan. I wanted to give you a little bit more specific timeframe. I know that our consultant met with you during work session last month, but we're just going to, we're going to meet on October 15th. Our executive leadership team is going to be meeting with Ray, and we're going to custom-design how the strategic planning process goes forward. We're going to have an educational leadership system orientation in January of 2024. By the way, that will involve the board in that place, so stay tuned for some more detailed information on timeframes and when dates will work for board members. We're going to assess our reality, kind of where we are, where did we come from? In between January and March of 2024, we're going to describe our vision. We're going to measure how we're doing in the strategic planning process with our vision cards, and that'll be April through October. We'll take the summer off as we engage internal and external constituents. And then we're going to set our strategic plan, which will involve a governance plan and an operational plan from November to January of 2025, culminating in that, beginning of that strategic plan being completed by January of 2025 with those three-year plans in place at that time. In our communications plan, we basically, the only one update moving forward is, we have, Bobby has sent out the survey, so we're just in the process of getting feedback. I understand the first day was real good response rate from the survey. Hopefully, it wasn't too extensive, but it'll give us some good baseline information and data to move forward in the next part of the planning process for our website. I would entertain any questions that the board has at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Shane? Thank you, Mr. Shane. Up next is our principal reports, starting with Mrs. Schultz, elementary principal.
Welcome to Delano Board, members of the, don't have the elementary. Thank you for keeping the schedule a little bit, so I can just scoot out to see if I got it, probably bugging. Orientation seems like a long tackle, but we had it, and it was great. We had nearly 100% turnout, so that was wonderful. We always appreciate families working their schedules or else we accommodate those hours for us. And we had about 45 new families starting with us, and of course, all of our new incoming kindergarteners. So it was great to welcome them into the school. And we still have a lot of new staff acquiring some new learning of how we do things at Delano Elementary School in addition to the new students. They're still kind of transitioning, they either came from totally different districts or smaller schools, so just kind of getting acclimated to, you know, a bigger setting is different for a few of those. But everybody's transitioning really well. And at the end of the first week, we had our first Pi event. We had an outdoor movie night, and that was very, very successful. We had great weather, and even with the play and football game, we still had a full set of families out there watching in the courtyard area. I want to share a little bit of our incoming fast data with you. I combined the second and third grades since that is what our goal is established with. So we, our A reading is starting at 71%, and A math is at 76%. So that's a 5% decrease from where we started last fall. So we definitely have some work to do, for sure. And we are taking the month of October at our late start to dig into the data, make sure that we have our interventions in place, look at our tier one, and then get our progress monitoring group set up so that we know that what we're doing is working and what to do and what to switch to if it is not. So that follows right along with our MTSS update. As far as our Tier One, our structured literacy, Diane Pullman presented in September, bringing forward what a lot of our letters cohort went through and that PD. So now we're starting to kind of spread that out into all staff so that we all are putting in those best practices and the strategies that are research-based for increased reading success among learners. Additionally, I wanted to just share a little bit about screen time at the elementary school. Mr. Shane had asked that we report on this in our prospective buildings. And I did get a few questions from parents as I gave a lot of tours this summer with our new enrollees, but the question came up about how much screen time are kids having at the elementary school? They noticed that we have our Chrome cards, so we have a one-to-one Chromebook for all of our students. So it was a great question. I would say, in speaking with teachers and just my observations being in the classroom, the kids are on their Chromebooks maybe once or twice a day. I would say it's that 15 to, 10 to 15 minutes at a time during stations or independent work at the elementary school that they are working on Reading Eggs, or Moby Max, iExcel, something that's individualized and tailored for them to kind of go at whatever skill that they are working on. Now, our presentation of material is on a clever touch, which is a screen. So if you kind of equate that back to the overhead projector way back in the day, you know, there has to be some sort of presentation of material. And we have clever touch, which I think is very intuitive and insightful and allows for a lot of layering of different instructional materials. So they are looking at a screen for a chunk of the time, but that instruction is facilitated by the teacher still. And there is a lot of multisensory approach happening during that instruction. So there is a screen in front of them, but it is not for a very long duration of time. The nature of students at that elementary level is, their attention spans are not very long anyway. So it's very chunked, and then there's usually a mix of hands-on, manipulative, read aloud. You know, all of those things are kind of woven in to that. And there's no cell phones that they can have out. Some kids do have them in their backpacks, depending on where they're going after school or if they need to check in with their parents. So some parents have provided third graders with a cellphone. And if that is a family choice, then we just set the parameters for what they can have out during the school day. Same goes for electronic watches. So those are kept in the lockers and in the backpacks. Those are not out during the school day at the elementary school. They have been a little distracting for kids, there's some games that they can get on those things. So, those don't come out during the school day. And then last, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our social worker, Janelle Wilson. This Thursday, she has partnered with Wright County, the Children's Outreach, to start an open house. So it's a family resource open house that we have at the elementary school. So families are invited to come and learn about what resources are available, what assessments, any assistance that might be needed for families. And she's just going to be there with some other county members to just set up and be a resource for families. She's also working on getting a haircut clinic to provide free haircuts for community members and families that may need that service as well. And she's working already on our holiday helpers for the holiday season. And last, we of course have homecoming week this week, so we have our dress-up days in full swing. And then our Pi group is going to be working the concessions at the football game. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Good luck at the volleyball game. Up next, Ms. Thompson from the intermediate school.
Not used to having an answer to follow. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having me here this evening to present to you on behalf of the intermediate school. So we also had a successful workshop week and open house at DIS. We ended our workshop week on Thursday with a pretty intensive training with all of our district staff on MTSS, multi-tier systems of support, which as you know is a district initiative that we have this year. And the presenter, they are really focused on Tier One best practices for teaching for all of our kids. So we spent a lot of time with that on Thursday, and then at our most recent two-hour late start as a staff, we came back together and I facilitated some more discussion about that because, believe it or not, the last day of workshop week, my teachers' brains were a little bit full. So it was good for us to come back last week during our two-hour late start. And what the teams did is, we reviewed the information that the presenter gave us, and then as teams, they agreed on their non-negotiables for what does solid core instruction look like in fourth grade? And kind of broke it down by the areas that she had presented. So it was a really good time just to kind of redigest that information and really apply it to specific teaching areas. So we worked on that last week as well. We have finished our fast testing with our students. And then as of last Friday, our MTSS building-level team met to review data. And we have all of our students placed in their appropriate Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. So I'd like to acknowledge Greg Hinker, he does a great job leading that team through all of that. He pulls all of the data, they look at every single student, name by name, line by line, and make sure that everyone's getting what they need. I'll share our exact numbers when I do my school improvement plan next month, but we are well into the mid-80s in math and reading at the intermediate school. So we're starting from a really good place. But one of the things that we talked about at our two-hour late start as a staff is, it's not just about being in the 80s, like, great, we're in the 80s, but for the group of students, we have every single one of them, we want them to make a year's worth of growth. And so how do we ensure that that is happening with each of our students? So that's kind of our focus for the year. Other than that, the first few weeks of school at DIS are very focused on our learning environment and establishing school-wide expectations. So we spend our first two weeks and all of our Tiger time talking about all of our school-wide expectations, recess, lunch, leaving the building, all of those pieces. And then, just this last week, we kind of did a focus on building safety, and we went through all of the things from how can students help keep the building safe, fire drills, lockdown drill conversations, and a lot of those things. So it's been a lot of school-wide expectations, it's a big part of how positive behavior systems work, and we're really working towards having a strong Tier One PBIS system. And our teachers do an excellent job with that. So we're off to a really strong start, it's been, it's been nice. In terms of screen time at the intermediate school, as with most things in the intermediate school, it is a progression when it comes to what kids are accessing for their learning on screen time. I think you'll see fourth grade looking a little bit more like elementary is set up in terms of using Chromebooks in some of their stations. But by the time you're in sixth grade, for example, our new science curriculum has an online textbook, and it has features in there that we wouldn't be able to give kids access to if it were in a regular textbook. So they use that as their core curriculum. Our sixth grade also puts everything on Google Classroom. So does fifth grade, and fourth grade has it as well. And we kind of slowly teach students how to find what they need, how to pull the assignments they need. I was home with my fifth grader last week, and he said, "I don't know what my homework is." And I said, "Well, can you look on your Google Classroom?" I have no idea how to find what he needs, but he went right on and found his things. And so it's interesting to see just kind of teaching and scaffolding those skills for our kids. So by the time they leave us, as sixth graders, they're pretty independent in managing some of those platforms. We use it for some enrichment, some intervention options. It's often used as a different way to practice information that has been taught in that core instruction, so. We do have a pretty simple cellphone policy, which is they just can't have them out, they need to stay in their lockers as soon as the bell rings until the end of the day. It's nice to have a clear policy on that, there's not a lot of question to it. Every now and then, we might get a student who says, "Someone's going to steal it from my locker." In which case, we say, "Great, you can keep it in my office, and I can text your mom if I need to." And they usually are okay keeping it in their locker. But they can keep it in the office if they want to, we really haven't had any issues. This is the first year where our site-based team had a really in-depth conversation about smartwatches in our school, because obviously, we're seeing more and more of that. We kind of went back and forth in terms of, do we say absolutely no? Do we let them start practicing some independence and managing their technology? Because again, we're preparing them for the high school where they have more access to that. So smartwatches are allowed in the intermediate school. We try to really coach kids to silence any notifications, any sounds, anything like that. But we're monitoring it because it still is, it's a challenge for kids to have that readily accessible. We want to help them learn to be independent with that, but, you know, they're 10 and 12, so. We're working on it. Right now, though, it hasn't been a major issue. And then just in terms of digital citizenship, Matt mentioned, we do teach that school-wide, and then it's also a part of our life skills curriculum, so there's some of that, that's fun. So it's just kind of an overview of what screen time looks like in our building. And then I'll just close by sharing what's coming up. We have Eagle Bluff this week, so all the sixth-grade teachers have been busily preparing for that. They leave on Wednesday, they'll be back on Friday. We actually scheduled a week later this year so we wouldn't miss homecoming, and then homecoming was a week later. It's just the nature of the beast. But they will be back for the football game, and actually, our pep fest is much more manageable with only two grade levels, so. It all works out. And then as a reminder, there is no school for our sixth graders on Monday. That's in agreement, we worked out with our sixth-grade teachers in recognition of all the extensive time that they put in when they go on this overnight trip with our students. So if you have a sixth grader, you can keep them home. We're also participating in homecoming festivities, lots of dress-up days. Like I mentioned, our pep fest on Friday, so it's been a good start to the year, and we're kind of right on track, so. Questions at all for me this evening? Thank you very much.
Up next, our school principal, Mr. Hook.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to represent the high school for you all this evening. First, I'd like to honor four seniors who have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program. So seniors Logan Felkner and Erica Kazin. So, seniors Logan Felkner and Erica Kazin have both received letters of commendation. And two other seniors have achieved National Merit semifinalist designations based on their results for the PSAT, from the PSAT last school year. So, congratulations to Meredith Dice and Megan Westburg for earning this prestigious honor. And I've already begun working with both of them to prepare their applications for the scholarship. So, congratulations to all four of those and especially good luck to Meredith and Megan. We have had a very, very busy but good start to the school year. Actually, we're meeting with our site-based leadership team tomorrow just to kind of gather some feedback and debrief from the first few weeks of the school year. This year was a little bit busier than most just because of, of course, new statutory requirements and things like that. So, we did picture day and we did bus training and pedestrian training and bike helmet safety training for the required grade levels and all of those sorts of things. And also a thorough review of our new handbook in preparation for the school year. And we also facilitated a social media presentation with Wright County probation agents, Kaylee Henson and Rachel Beckman to present information to all of our students on the dangers of social media. So, as you know, we've also employed the new schedule. Thankfully, we have not run across any unexpected obstacles associated with the new schedule. But one of the cool aspects of the new schedule is that win time. And as, as a means to facilitate our win time, we have contracted with a program called Student Support Time to facilitate the flexible scheduling. And so, we had the opportunity to train all of our students on that system. And we've already facilitated one win time that went very, very well. Unfortunately, our next win time scheduled was for this coming week, but of course, homecoming week kind of throws a wrench into that situation. So, looking forward very much to what the win time opportunity has in store for us this coming school year. Of course, this week is homecoming. And so, you know, the building is energized, decorated fantastically. So, today we crown the king and queen at our coronation. So, Julia Chapey and Vinnie Capilleri are our king and queen. And Wednesday, we'll be doing the touchdown throw-down activity. And then we'll have our pep fest on Friday. And so, the pep fest actually gets to involve all three of our buildings on the main campus, which is always a fun tradition for us to have. And then of course, we're going to round out the homecoming week with our dance on Saturday night at the Intermediate School from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. And of course, as you approved with our handbook last spring, that dance is just for Delano High School ninth through 12th graders. Like the other buildings, we also facilitated our first round of fast testing as part of our district-wide implementation of MTSS. We are much more intentional at the high school now and have expanded the grade levels. So, we conducted fast testing for all seventh through 10th graders. And in reading, our proficiency rate was 83.2%. And each grade level ranged from 80.8% in 10th grade and then our high was 87.4% in 7th grade. All total, the proficiency rate was 83.2. And in math, our proficiency rate was 86%. So, that ranged from 81% proficient in 9th grade to 88%, which was actually both 8th and 10th grades. And of course, as you probably recognize or realize, proficiency is actually based on those students who score in the college pathway or low-risk range in those score benchmarks. We have had some students, of course, that have not yet taken that test and we'll get those tests made up in the next couple of weeks. 68 students have not yet taken the reading test and about 43 students have not yet taken the math test. And that was as of Thursday afternoon when we compiled the data. Just to continue the conversation regarding screen times and cell phones and things like that we have at the high school, I actually had a lot of conversation particularly about cell phones over the last year or so. That's something that we review on an annual basis through our student handbook update procedures. We, of course, decided that we would leave it to teacher discretion, specifically with cell phones. It's fair to say that I would, and I would argue that probably 100% of our staff are utilizing Google Classroom to facilitate classroom resources and assignments and those things. But otherwise, it's up to teacher discretion. I would say that the majority of our staff by default requires students to put the cell phones in their pouches on the door as they come in. And that's especially true in 7th and 8th grade. So, 7th and 8th grade teachers have sort of banded together to prohibit cell phones at all, at any time during the school or class time. But obviously, they pick those up between classes and at lunch and things like that. I must admit that the screen time issue is a little bit tricky because it, quite frankly, feels a little bit like a societal concern that the school is expected to resolve. I liken our students or our use of technology, whether it's Chromebooks or cell phones, to be for educational and professional purposes. And I think, I think it's a little short-sighted for us to just lump screen time into one big bucket because we, of course, have recreational uses of screen time. We have educational purposes for screen time. And, and I think if we lump them all together, I would hate for us as educators to sacrifice opportunities for students to learn professional purposes and productivity applications in favor of recreational purposes outside of school. So, we basically take the approach that teachers will use their discretion to the, to their best ability and then parents, of course, will do the same. And in the end, hopefully that matches out in a wash, you know, at the end of the school day. So, that's all I have for an update. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the high school.
Where is the reporting source coming from? Can we know? Are you guys just, did you guys just get organized?
It was a question a board member had last month. They came, we had the email and then people wanted to know what our screen time usage was. So, they're updating us on that.
Thanks, Barry.
Any other questions, Mr. White? Thank you, Mr. White. Up next is business manager, Mary Reader.
And I was going to give an update on our enrollment this year. So, we're up by 20 students over what we had originally budgeted for in June. Currently, we're at 2,396 students and we have budgeted for 2,376. We have 21 more students at the elementary, 25 in the intermediate, and there are 26 fewer students in the high school. There, the revenue funding is higher for high school students than for elementary or K-6 students. So, overall, our revenue is up, going to increase about $60,000. And due to that enrollment increase at the two lower levels, the elementary and intermediate, we did add one additional FTE into both of those buildings for that enrollment increase. But overall, we have about 160 students that are brand-new to Delano this year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And then, up next is community ed.
I'm going to be very brief. You heard about some of them. But I didn't want to publicly talk about our middle school budgeting piece.
A couple of things with this is Natalie Palmer, again, turned out an incredible show. We had 70 students participate. 11 of those were at no cost. So, in community ed, we do the best we can to make sure if a student can't participate because of cost, we do everything we can to make sure we can get them in. So, 11 of those students, we were able to get in at no cost. Our total paid attendance, now this is a show that allows students, younger kids to come in for free, teachers to come in for free. Our total paid attendance was just under 1,300. So, that's 429 tickets per show that's paid. That's a really great turnout. Those theaters are full when these shows go on, which is a really cool experience. And then, like I said earlier, is that this was our first test using GoFan. So, we had a system in the district called Arts People and that's where we sold all of our tickets for any shows. So, any theater productions were all sold through that. With us going with GoFan, we could bring everything under one umbrella. We also eliminated a monthly fee that was associated with the other platform. So, this was our first test using GoFan. And we, like I said, we offered pre-sale online and at the door with cash and 72% of all of our tickets were done pre-sale online. And that was really good. Like I said, great feedback. But really, what I want to say was how wonderful Natalie does with these kids. We get a ton of feedback on what a great experience it is. And for community ed, you know, there's a lot of people trying to do more with theater. This is what gives these kids that first base and hopefully get some really positive distractions with theater. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Up next is our student board reps.
It's good to be back. It's pretty brief this month. In the elementary school, there is many new students, as Mary clarified. And there are also 11 new staff members this year. And they are doing a new mentorship program, which contains staff mentor leaders for other staff members. And in the district right now, it's Jane Oxway and Teresa Swan. And the Delano Elementary Education Association is giving bags to new students in the building to wish luck to their new schools. And, sorry. High school football players will be reading to students this Friday for homecoming. And yeah, it was a pretty brief. And then in the Intermediate School, it was a smooth start to the 2023-2024 school year. And the sixth graders have their field trip to Eagle Bluff this Wednesday. And yeah, new students in this building as well.
And then for the high school, also very brief, brief. Start has been fairly good with the new schedule, of course. There's a lot of acclimating and adjusting to the curriculum, you know, trying to morph, you know, how are they going to teach a 90-minute lesson they previously taught into a 60-minute lesson? But overall, things have been pretty good. I think better than the students expected because the staff, you know, has been very understanding and administration too. I think it's been a, a good start to the year. Other than that, just getting the housekeeping stuff out of the way this first month of school, picture day, bus training, all that. Yes, and of course, homecoming week is this week, which I think everybody is very excited about. So, yeah, that's it.
Are we introducing our newest board member?
Yeah.
That's going to say yes.
I'm sorry?
Introducing our newest board member?
I can introduce our newest student school board member. This is Sophia Grant. She went through the process last spring and was elected by her fellow students after we went through an interview process. And I'm very happy to introduce Sophia Grant as the junior student school board representative for this school year.
Welcome, Sophia.
Welcome.
Sophia will be with us for the next two years. Moving on to board reports. First up is Masiko.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to share for Masiko tonight. First thing was Masiko's nurse, Jolie Holland, was elected or selected, sorry, was selected as the 2023 Minnesota School of the Year. So, we're very excited and honored to have her receive that recognition from her peers. So, that was pretty fun to read. Also, we did settle two very important contracts. Last month, we settled our Minnesota Ed/Masiko teacher contract. And then essentially tomorrow, we have on our agenda our coordinators, or it was previously coordinators, are now called supervisors. We did reach a tentative agreement with that, is my understanding. They passed that through their group and we will have that as an agenda item tomorrow. So, that is certainly something to note for next month's agenda. And then similar to what Delano is going through, Masiko in terms of their health insurance bid process, did decide to actually move back to Medica. They had left the consortium last year due to just a massive increase and went out to Medica. And then Medica was not able to provide a decent or reasonable increase. So, they're moving back. It's still a 10% increase, but it was essentially significantly lower than it would have been to stay. So, anyway, that's it.
All right. Any questions for Amy?
I should say, everything else is listed in the link.
All right. Moving on, up next is C. Matt and I both attended the C meeting. They had their first meeting last Friday. They brought in Assistant Commissioner Bobby Burnham from the Department of Education and Peter Leatherman from Morris Leatherman to do the state of the state again. And actually do it backwards. And so, Peter, who actually was up second, gave and shared with us kind of what the state of Minnesota looks like through their polling. He shared that crime is still one of the basic concerns facing Minnesotans, followed by the cost of things and inflation. Education is fairly low on the list for both Democrats and Republicans. Most people in Minnesota think that public education in Minnesota is good. 50% of Minnesotans understand that schools are not adequately funded. Strong majority believe that the increase in funding will fix the issues in quality of education. About half of Minnesotans are at least, Minnesotans are at least somewhat concerned with curriculum that our students are using. And that's about a 5% increase over last year. And then moving on to Assistant Commissioner Burnham, she talked about the READ Act. This is the legislation that's going to directly impact every school in the state and is an attempt by the department to address the lack of progress that schools across the state are making in reading proficiency. If you're familiar with READ well by third grade, the READ Act is essentially a reboot of that. Focuses on reading by third grade and that's because, as the commissioner pointed out, research shows that a student not reading proficiently by third grade faces long-term challenges. So, what you'll see in this legislation is a lot of pressure put on our elementary educators. There's a push to give them access to improve instructional strategies, interventions, assessments, and things that will allow them to understand how language works and science reading. And I know I've said this before and this is why I'm doing it second, is I want to point out that our elementary staff and administrators are well ahead of others in this area. We, Delano has been proactive. Our teachers have stepped forward and began taking the letters training, that's that language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. Before it was even clear that this would become required, our teachers were doing it in some way. They took that 90 hours in their personal time and started in those literacy methods. And I think that in a community as a whole, recognizing where our staff has been leaders and our administrators have been leaders and stepping forward, especially when we saw what we saw today for our literacy goals, other schools aren't seeing that. We had a massive amount of our teachers step forward. And now that the state is coming forward and saying, "We're going to want all teachers to start doing this stuff," there's going to be a backlog. There's not enough people trained to do it. There's going to be people looking for that. We're not going to have that backlog because most of our elementary staff is already trained. And so, just to applaud our administration for stepping ahead when it wasn't required and saying, "Let's take a look at what's best for our students and moving forward right away." There's a gap, right? There's a log, a backlog to when we start and to when we start to see that effect in the classroom, but we're ahead of that. And so, we're going to see results sooner than other schools are. And so, it's nice work by our elementary staff and those in our special ed department and our basic skills department who, who saw that need two years ago and three years ago and started making that transition right away before it was required. And so, I just wanted to bring that up because that's what a lot of that C meeting was about.
And that training will count. They don't have to be retrained because of the new law in place. So, we are, we're ahead of the, I shared that information with our curriculum coordinator and she was very pleased that we wouldn't have to expend on PD dollars on that and the training. So, we're, we're excited to see what the next few years bring about based on that.
And I don't know if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I know that, I noticed that Rachel and I attended, it's a hybrid, so we attended virtually, but I did pick up that there was a bit of frustration when the Assistant Commissioner was on, just on this is all moving so fast and the department is trying to interpret things in a timeline and getting approved trainers and approved, working with other consultants. I think it just, it just reminds me at the, at my stage in my career that, hold on, let's not blame, let's just work as best we can with what we know and we'll get there. And if we can be proactive in working forward, we're in a better place for it. But there was, I did pick up a bit of frustration from some superintendents and in the end, they, you know, they, they gave grace and they, and they did, you know, these people come to present in front of a large group, C is a large organization, and sometimes they get to be a little bit of the target and they're just the messenger. This is the act of legislature and the work that they did. Obviously, the department works through that process as well, but we're in it together and we'll figure it out.
I think the hard part for the department is they have two professionals in this area that are, one's part-time, one's full-time. And then the amount of resources available for our schools to use to even do this training, there's just not, there's simply not enough to do what now they've asked of schools to do. So, when a school like ours jumped ahead and got, I think it's 26 of our elementary school staff trained, we're not going to be part of those, those districts that are scrambling for the 90 or so that are available to do this training right now. The department knows there's just, the resources don't exist in the state of Minnesota for the requirement that they've put out there. And so, while we might be able to meet that, other districts are going to be scrambling to try to find somebody.
Any questions? All right. Moving on to old business. First up is to approve the second rate of policy 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. Do we have a motion to approve the second rate of policy 524?
I'll make the motion.
All right. We have a motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Up next, approve the second rate of policy 709, Policy 709, Student Transportation Safety.
Policy 709, student transportation safety. We went over that last month as well. Do we have a motion to approve policy 709?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business. Up is approve the 2023 Pay 2024 Proposed Property Tax Levy. We discussed it briefly in work session.
Yeah. All we're doing right now is just proposing that we levy the max. The actual dollar amounts, the final dollar amounts will be approved at the December board meeting. So right now, there's nothing specific. It's just leaving it for the department to finish making their adjustments to the levying document.
This is something we do every year. Do we have a motion to approve the 2023 Pay 2024 Proposed Property Tax Levy?
So moved.
Motion by Sarah. Do we have a second?
Second, Jim.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Up next is to set the date, time, and location of the Truth and Taxation Meeting, which is set for 7:00 p.m. on Monday, December 18th, in the Delano High School Tiger Den. Do we have a motion to set the date, time, and location of the Truth and Taxation Meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Up next is resolution to approve the school resource officer contract. We went over that in work session as well. Do we have a motion to approve the resource officer contract?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote. Bobby can have her turn.
All right, board member Johnson.
Aye.
Board member Black.
Aye.
Board member Deppa.
Aye.
Board member Gerke.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
And board member Shoust.
Aye.
And board member Roser.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. And next is to approve the community education roof bid. We went over that in work session as well. Do we have a motion to approve the community education roof bid?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Sue. Second by Corey. Any further discussion? Just pointing out it came in under. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And finally, public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by the speakers at this time. Do we have anybody here for public comment? You can come forward.
Good evening, school board and district representatives. My name is Grant Ellis. I live at 962 10th Street South here in Delano. I am a parent, and I am also the president of RC Football Boosters Club. So this is our first year. So we've been working with the AD's office on policies regarding some of the things that the boosters has been wanting to explore in this first year. So it felt like it might be a good time to just express some comments about the booster club's hopes as we go forward with the program. So I'm going to attempt to be brief about this, but a little bit of background. So I am the current DT ABC football rep. I was last year too, when I learned about Sean's needs for the football program. So he had kind of inherited this program, and as was mentioned earlier by Eric, there was definitely equipment, the status of the program was in dis, a little bit of disrepair just perspective this year. We set a budget, a primary budget of $45,000 that was primary needs. We set a secondary budget of $13,000. I am happy to say that through the booster efforts, we have been able to get close on our primary budget. So we're about $5,000 short right now of our primary, and we're still working for ways to, how do we continue to do that fundraising? This program was started in March of this year, and the way that we approached it was really to say, gold standard-wise, as parents in the program, et cetera, you know, how would we like to see the football program look? And we based a lot of it on what we've seen from surrounding communities, and there definitely was gaps. So a lot of the things that we set out to do, we based on our travels, places we went. These were big schools, little schools, you know, all kinds of different things. And so I'm happy to say we have had some really positive success feedback this year. We've been able to set up a website for football-specific, the signage at the fields, the flags, the process that we built just to, for future generations now of this booster program. We really think there's a nice foundation to be able to do that fundraising, to be able to raise some of the funds that are needed. It is a voluntary group. We drafted our bylaws based off of all the other sports, which interestingly brings one of my biggest observations I wanted to share with the school board, is having parents of multi-sport kids. It's very clear, there's a lot of inconsistency about how other programs operate to how football operates. In fact, Eric touched on a couple of those things, and I did want to make just a few comments about that. So, you know, one area that, that kind of drove the conversation tonight was food trucks. So the booster club was pushing to explore food trucks this year, and we did get permission to do that for the first game of the year, but then we were put on pause as they wanted to look at policy. And, you know, a few things that were brought forward to us just about concerns specifically were around the impact of concessions, the monies that are raised at concessions, the reentry policy that relates to football. And then just after the game, there was excess garbage, which seemed like it was a mixture of different things. So those were the things that were brought forward to us. For perspective, you know, our goal with food trucks, really, our primary goal was the fan experience. We really wanted to create an atmosphere where there's going to be the want to tailgate, the want to be near the school. Secondary was money. We're estimating this year that the revenues raised from food trucks, if we would have done the four games, we thought would have been $1,200. And again, it was just an estimate. We're really kind of in learning mode right now. We don't know how food trucks impacts concessions, either positively or negatively. We also don't know what it does for attendance, for the tailgating experience. You know, the feedback from the first night was very positive, but again, it wasn't quantified. So really, from our perspective, we want to do fact-finding around this, and we want to work with the school to figure out, you know, how can we execute food trucks, learn about how it impacts those things? You know, there's some belief that it could positively lift concession sales. A lot of people commented that they spent more money on beverages at the concessions that night, just because that wasn't something you could get at the food truck. So a few things that we're just hoping for the policy. Number one is we want the consistency for the programs. That piece is really clear, that all sports are different. And I didn't intend to comment on this, but Eric mentioned it tonight, so I think it's worthwhile because it's really come up a lot through the booster activity, is that youth program, that feeder program. If you look at sports like wrestling, hockey, et cetera, they are vertically integrated, and a lot of their fundraising and their booster monies come from that youth program up. So I think there's a huge opportunity for football boosters to work with community ed, work with the AD's office, to really find a program that kind of helps unify football. You know, definitely is clear to me, to members of the board, the football board, that there is inconsistency. And again, right now, we're in the spirit of, we want to collaborate. It's an open book. We meet monthly. We invite all football families to join. In fact, anybody here is welcome to join a football booster meeting. And again, it's really trying to, A, get the football program on par, you know, with what the coaches' visions are, how we compare to other schools. And I don't necessarily mean or no, so, you know, we understand that there are some schools that resource-wise just clearly are financially in a very different place. But even some of the smaller schools and some of the things that they're doing and that we've seen, we just think there's a big opportunity to make football an even better experience for folks, so. So I just wanted to give that feedback, just as perspective, as we draft policies. You know, we also need those policies to be fair. You know, the food trucks, I'll just say it this way, don't want to come for two hours. And I know the reentry fee is a challenge, so just being able to have the opportunity to explore where are those trucks placed in the future, and again, really understand how does it enhance the experience? Because again, I think at this point in time, we really don't know. We need more data points really to understand how that overall impact is, so. So thank you for listening.